Ready? Anybody, everybody, call the meeting to order. Will Kirk call, Clark call the roll?
Mayor Patricelli.
Present.
Councilwoman Dunn.
Present.
Councilman Dawes here.
Can I ask everyone a piece of animal? Do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any means.
I feel like somebody's like, "I can never find the time."
Every meeting?
No.
I'll ask the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 19th meeting.
Motion made in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Dawes. Favor. Councilwoman Dunn.
Favor.
Mayor Patricelli.
In favor. All right, we move into reports of officers and committees. Okay. Ooh, sorry about that. We're not going to use that.
Yeah, I turned the volume off too because it started to make a little noise.
All right, I'll just talk loud for the camera there. I did have a meeting with the U.S. Wildlife Foundation regarding the geese and the crows along Hudson Shores Park. They are having a meeting next week with the city of Troy. We opted into the program for the crows particularly because it's now going to start their nesting. This is now their hibernation period, or not hibernation, but their migration period. So they're coming back. I don't know if you've seen the skies lately at 5:00 or 5:30, but the crows are making their way back for their winter nesting. So I talked with them and they will start pyrotechnics, they will start noise blasters and various ones. And the idea is to get the cluster that is currently estimated to be around 10,000 to 11,000 crows, to break that crow's nest up, or that murder as they call it, because that's what a cluster is, down to manageable groups of 500. That's the intent. We're never going to eradicate them, but we're going to break up that nesting and that bigger piece that they got between Cohoes, or between Troy, Green Island and us and just keep on blasting to make the crows not nest. Now, tonight, we're going to look at a resolution where we were looking at two ways to clean up the shoreline from trees and with North Line, but the U.S. Wildlife said it's the and/or type of scenario. We are going to take down the trees along the shore and cut the brush down, but in doing a crow's nest, which is the tree, you're opening up the area now for geese to come in. So it's an and/or. You got that. So we're never going to eradicate the geese, we're never going to eradicate the crows.
I thought we talked, didn't we talk in the spring that about the geese being eradicated and it was a fall project because that's when...
It's continued, yeah. So they actually took away 60 geese this year with their nesting.
Okay.
But again, he says you will always have the couple that are going to come back. You'll never fully eradicate them. The same with the crows. We'll never have a clean space as that goes. That's what their conversation I had with them.
A problem for the park.
It is a problem for the park. We're going to have that.
Concerts and trying to draw people there to have picnics and...
Agreed, agreed. We may not have the cluster that we...
Playground stuff and...
Right, I agree. I agree with you.
Restaurant.
We may not have that cluster that we had as we continue to do the program year after year, but they are a migratory bird, so they're going to come back, you know, year after year until you get that full migration. So you might take away 60 this year and of that, whatever is now gone, a couple of it might come back. So it's that circle that we got. What their intent is, is to reduce the numbers by a large population. So, but the guy who came, this Ken, Ken, I forget his last name, the head of fisheries and wildlife, he said it will never be a full eradication, it will always have.
Do they have geese rolling around over at Starbuck Island?
Yeah. And that was the one thing that happened. They told Starbuck Island not to take the trees down. Now Starbuck Island, and they put in that artificial grass for the dogs, their little dog park and everything, and they're having, the geese are thinking, "That's a playman now." So they have a major problem over there. So we're going to continue to work with them to try to bring the numbers down and to see where we can get and what that manageable program is going to be. But you remember the pictures that we had during last year's towing season with the winter and a couple of cars that were fully covered with it? That was due to the crows. So our idea again is to start this, do the pyrotechnics, the blasters and the noise makers, just to continually keep them moving and not that chance to nest on a daily basis. So I don't know if there's any other questions on that. The two new police cars are here, they're outfitted. There was a couple of little snags as far as retorting to our server, so they're working through that. And they should be fully in service, I think, next week, I think. They were, I don't know if you know.
I do.
Okay, all right. We got our new salter for the one, the large international truck. That came in, Hank picked that up. We're getting our trucks ready, in fact, they are ready for the winter season. Paving is winding down. We have, the last of the paving that we have is Selkie Drive, and then after that, they hit the punch list items, which is going to be 12th Avenue, 8th Avenue, where the paving from last year, where we have those catch bases in the middle of the street, and then the ponding that we have on 26th Street. If anyone knows of any other punch list items that we haven't done, please let me know and we'll go forward from there. Now, in preparation of the DRI for next year, I had a meeting with the city of Cohoes. It's the mayor, Keeler, who was very gracious, as well as the person who did their DRI application. Cohoes has offered us as much assistance as we need along the way, but my surprise was that that was an in-house application. They did not hire an engineer. I went through the last six rounds over the past couple of nights and before my meeting in preparation and noticed the cost going anywhere from, the cheapest one, I think, was about $89,000, and the most expenses was $210,000. There was various engineering firms that kept resonating as the winners. Our intention, or my intention, was is to put that out to an RFP, to see if we can get them, but spending that kind of money, I'm not sure is the way I would like to go with it. So talked to Cohoes, found out what software system they got, what they did. I think it's prime to start moving forward internally to package this together and put that efforts together for the application when it comes in the upcoming spring. We'll see a NOFA somewhere about, I think they typically come out around June or July with the notice of the funding availability, and then we go towards application, which is typically that August, September timeframe. I talked with them as to their processes along the way. They purposely, like we did, was pull the application, dust it off and improve it. And when they improved it, it was with the systems that they provided and not spending any city funds. So I'm leaning towards this. I've talked to Paul Murphy, who's been successful in grant writing. He's on board with that type of look. So I wanted to present that to you as to that's a possible and a viable solution to it, but it's the way to get this thing back in the queue for the upcoming rounds.
So Cohoes, how many, do you know how many people actually worked on it? Do they have a city engineer there?
One person.
One person there?
One person.
Okay.
Well, the one person was Steve Napier, I think it is?
Yes.
With several different, I know you might have anything on that, but...
Well, they have, so, I mean, they have a department, they have an economics slash planning department of four people plus a city engineer.
Right, that's what I was wondering about, yes. I know they have more than we do, so yeah, I know they're bigger than we are.
Right. But when talking about this, Steve was the one tasked with, you know, doing it, doing this application with it.
But we have Steve, also our planner.
Yes. But one of the things I was thinking to augment that or to support that would be work with, you know, maybe engineering firms to do mapping, to do certain things that they had in their application. Stuff that we don't have software to do, maybe buy that. So the expenses might be $5,000 cost or whatever it might be to do it versus the $100,000 cost. But it's...
So Lindsey's firm?
No.
No.
Well, I don't...
I wasn't sure if that was all part of the DRI something we did.
No, they're the ones who did it. And remember, we took that away from another firm that had it back from 2019.
Yes.
Because I was leaning towards going out to RFP until I had this conversation the other day with the mayor and Steve Napier. And to me, that's obtainable. That's obtainable to get another DRI application, but if we had to spend money for resources, it'd be easier to do, to go out and have an engineer produce a map or produce something. But then, you know, and what I'll do is I'll paste, I'll scan their application that they gave me and I'll send it to you guys to look at it.
Hey, we think that might work. That's awesome.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at 3D presentation versus topical, you know, that type of look, it really, you move a picture and it tells a thousand words. So, but I think, I think our biggest, regardless of how we put it together, the plan that we were missing was the development plan, you know, having the components. Because in our presentation, I think that's what they were...
Correct.
We may have had an application, correct, of some sort, but we have to have that substance to the, you know, to the application of what would make the DRI viable.
Right, got a partner with some kind of a developer or a somebody.
Well, that's what we didn't have, but now we have this other funding, but on the same side, we have locations. And when you see this plan, you'll see how we answer that question. And I think it's all laid out for us now to see that, so. On your, you did mention about the paving, but Del Signor was going to do 3rd Avenue? Del Signor is still doing 3rd Avenue. This is, this I discussed was along Newcastle.
Oh, yes.
That was Newcastle. Yes, but we still have...
And Broadway in front of the Arsenal.
Let's not get greedy.
Oh, it's awesome. Down by Woodburne Warehouse, and I don't want to say this, but it's happening on the north side over by Tana Murray's.
And that's even further south than I saw the other day. Further, further south, all the way down by Darowski's House, you could see a path starting to develop there.
It's so strange. You know, for what reason, I wonder? I don't know.
Well, let me talk to, that was a Barton project. Let me talk with them to see what we can do to get that in check before we close out the bike dance. Remember, we paid that curfew.
Oh, yeah, right, absolutely, in front of the Arsenal, sure.
Okay. Got a little bit of a losing. Okay.
Just a quick question. How are we coming with the program to be installed in the vehicles that'll be doing the snow plowing and the street sweeper so that we can see where they are?
Sweeper has it. I showed the mayor that about a month ago or two months ago.
Oh, is it online?
No, that's not online yet. That should be done hopefully within the next couple of weeks. That, because we had a little bit of a hiccup with logging in our people. And we made it, I made it, so it's a 45-minute delay. It's not an online, it's not an automatic delay, so people will see where they've been, not a live action. So we're not having people going out to find our guys. And that was recommended by, the snow pass people, is to put a delay in there. A 45-minute delay? A what? 45-minute delay? No, they recommended a delay. I recommended the 45-minute delay to show where it is. Or I could do a 30-minute delay, but they're not going to get a five.
So it goes, does a block and then about half hour delay?
It'll show where it's been. Yeah, yeah. So, but we're getting there with it to have that. Sweeper, the sweeper was installed, we tested that, that worked fantastic. And I think we have seven trucks, including the Ben Trax that has... And can you do me a favor? Because I have, I have an individual keeps asking me about the sweeper on 11th Avenue. If that's on there, then that would show when and where. Okay, that was it. Joe, do you want to bring this up with the brochures?
You can. I know you worked, you know, a lot on this, if you'd like.
I just, just to say, we have, we made up these, these are two of the four brochures that were made up. The other one that's completely printed is the snow, the snow, the snow one. You didn't bring that one in?
I didn't see it in the office when I grabbed it.
Well, it's not going out with the bills, so it's not...
Oh, that's why, everything, okay.
So these are two, and these are going out with the water bills. We've worked on both of these with the DP, well, DPW, Joe, mostly been code and taking the old flyers that we made and making something up that was...
These look great.
Look, you know, professional. They're, what they were putting together, what our plan is now is to put them all in the water bills so that everybody would get a copy of this, so that they would know the, you know, the rules. What was intended, many, I think, in the past was that these were handed out to new owners, new tenants.
Right.
It got kind of sidetracked, didn't get, didn't get really done, a lot of the information. And I think what we're doing here is making sure, my idea was to make sure that this is something for education. It's, it can't be something saying, "I didn't know." And we want everybody to know so that what the rules are and what the expectations are for... And I know I've been getting many different comments. I don't know about what you are, you're getting, but I've been getting many different comments. They love the temporary law.
Yes, I've had several people on it.
Many people have said, "That's the best thing that you've done." Well, hopefully that's the only thing.
Yeah.
But it's a good thing that we've targeted, you know, on that. And I think that's going to help work it out and help do the cleanup, so. Okay, so these are done, these are going out next week?
Possibly tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, Monday, you know, by the time they get down there. So you'll have them, they'll be out there and then they'll be available. Dave has them downstairs on his front window. Jenny will have them on her window when people come in, so they'll all be...
Yeah, they look great.
The more we get out there, the better. Anybody else get anything about getting the word out, that's good. All right. Anything else? We'll move on to old business?
Your honor, there is no old business on this evening's agenda.
Okay, let's do new business then.
Excuse me. New business, ordinance number eight for 2023. This is an ordinance of the City Ward of Lee, New York, amending section 260-50, schedule 14, parking prohibited at all times.
I'll make a motion on ordinance number eight in 2023.
Well, I think we're not.
We're not.
Because the agenda says that it's just for presentation, so I think it's just for discussion.
Then I will retract what you said.
Thank you.
My apologies. I missed the opportunity.
And this is the area that's north of 5th Street on Oracle. Correct. That's the way it reads. It says from the north corner of Broadway and 5th Street for 18 feet. So it's that corner that you talked about. We removed the south bend when this first was presented to you as ordinance number six. Okay? All right, we've been there. You've seen it, right?
Yes, I have seen it. So this is, so it's presented tonight and then we would vote on, are we able to vote on it next meeting with, without press?
Yes.
As long as we're all here while it's presented?
He's out next weekend, so, yes, we can.
I think that's...
Let me refer to California. Honestly, I, if it's, so I forget exactly what the... Let's move on and I will answer the question, just I'll check the chart I was working on.
All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move to the next resolution.
Resolution number 66 for 2023 is a resolution approving an agreement for services between the City Ward of Lee and the Mohawk and Hudson River Humane Society for calendar year 2024 and authorizing and directing Mayor Charles B. Patricelli to execute same.
I'll make a motion on resolution number 66.
And I will second it.
All right, this, this here is the new contract for the Hudson Mohawk.
Correct.
I asked Joe to send us the copy of the old contract with Hudson Mohawk. Unfortunately, by the time we got it, I didn't have time to really compare.
Yeah, I apologize. I tried to...
It's okay.
VPN, we weren't able to get there. There are some changes to this, to this contract.
How significant?
I sent that to everybody. One second here.
I was able to, I took a very quick look at it and the changes are, the circumstances under which you're going to be able to bring an animal to the humane society is extremely limited.
Yeah.
And I think that no matter what you do, the city is going to need to find an alternative place to deliver these animals to. Most of the cases that you're going to have are going to be situations that I believe that the humane society is not going to take the animal.
Yeah. And specifically, as Brian was mentioning, if the cover of this has the changes, for example, it says here, under Article 7 of the, their law that they have there, "The municipality will need to make alternative sheltering arrangements for animals seized for other reasons such as dangerous and vicious dogs cases." Rabies, they want, they don't want, they don't want them. So this is what kind of shows...
What do they want?
The little kitten?
Yes.
Yes. Rabies confinement, other surrenders to the municipalities, or owner surrenders to the municipalities, they don't want. Temporary displacements of the owner, hospitalization, incarceration, code violations, they won't take those as well. They also say that the Hudson, Mohawk Hudson Humane Society reserves the right to turn away any animals in the event that the shelter is at capacity. And that's something similar to what I talked about the last time, where they called ahead of time and said, "Can we put one into a foster home?" And I said, "Yes." So if we don't get those type of calls, they're not going to take those dogs. So as, you know, council was saying, it is restrictive and it looks like we'll be looking to try and find alternatives to help this.
Well, I have a question then. If you have a dog that's, let's say vicious or has issues or, it isn't like you can bring them to Furry Friends or something like that, what if the dog has to be put down?
So typically, if you have a situation where the city court directs that a dog be put down, then it has to be, it's a vet who does that.
Normally a vet, but that would be at the humane society.
Right, right. So if you have a dog at the humane society and it's ordered to be put down, the humane society's vet does that.
But they don't want that dog.
They don't want that. But my, again, I only saw this a couple of minutes before I looked in.
Should we delay this until next week or in the next meeting? We could certainly...
You certainly can. I think they're limiting it to the only dogs that they want to accept, if I'm reading it correctly, are basically strays. So animals that your police department comes across and...
Puts on Facebook.
Who owns this dog, sort of thing. I think they want to bring, they'll accept those. I think it's limited to those.
This is what I think about, like the vicious dog. I imagine that they would take it if there's an order from the judge that says this dog has to be put down.
Well, they're not going to have the dog.
They're not going to hand the dog.
Yeah, they're not going to hand that.
They don't want the dog.
We would, I mean, bring the dog with the order or not.
Well, you, the judge is not going to have the authority to order the humane society to accept the dog and then put it down.
Yeah.
Did the price for the homeowners, if the dog got loose, was a stray dog or whatever, the price went up as well, right?
It's going to be a flat rate. I didn't get to that.
It's like $2.48 versus what, $1.50?
It was more than $1.50, so enough of that, I don't know.
Right, and which is...
Well, isn't there a per day fee after that? Sorry.
I thought the, I thought the cover letter said that there was, it was only the flat rate, there's no longer the per day, per day rate.
And it hasn't, there wasn't a per day rate?
There wasn't, but I remember seeing something about a $73, $75 per day.
Which, no, there's no. Which the big problem is that you get priced out of a dog, you know, that they, an owner's not going to, most, half times they're not even buying a dog license or whatever, but they, they're getting priced out, the next thing you know, the dog's $200, $300 to get it back, plus everything else that they got to do.
And you got to pay for the rabies, you got to pay for the license, which could be $13.50 or $23.50 plus $2.50 to get your dog back.
Yeah, but the municipality is now being billed on a per animal basis. They have what they call an intake fee, but they had some similar fees to that last year here, and that's on page five of the contract, but it talks about the intake fees, which are $2.48, and then transfer fees that they're now doing, and ancillary fees if requested by the officer of the municipality. So they're breaking it all a little bit more, but it seems like it is going to have a few extra charges.
The problem I think you're going to have is, same problem that many municipalities have, is finding a place to take these animals in the large proportion of scenarios where you need, where the humane society is not going to take them. So what you might want to consider is maybe we can find a place that will take them under all circumstances and not have an agreement with the humane society.
That's what I was wondering, that. I wonder if like the ASPCA knows any place? I don't know. How do you find?
The only one that they operate locally, the actual ASPCA, is like out in Fulton County or something like that.
Way up north of it.
Yeah. So the options are very limited.
Right.
And even some of the places, kind of like the, kind of your standard boarding places, they can't provide all the services necessarily. So the putting down part of it, or if they have an animal on their possession and the animal is sick, then what? So...
Yeah, because I, I mean, that, we're using the place on Cohoes Road, sort of, on Furry Friends. Furry Friends or whatever. And I'm assuming that what's, what's going to happen there is they're going to be overwhelmed as well at some point in time.
Yeah, I believe the city of Cohoes is using them a little bit, but also the city of Cohoes has an agreement with...
About that.
About that, yeah.
But they don't have a lot of room up there either.
My understanding is they're out of room.
Right. They're, just, and just within the last couple of days, I think we have five dogs that went down, so.
Fifty-five dogs.
I will say, if you license your dog, we were able to get a reunited dog with their owner by looking up their license number, so that was nice.
Yep.
The agreement was designed to begin January 1, 2024, right?
Yeah.
So we have, we have some time. I think no matter what, the city needs to find an alternative place.
Yeah.
Even if you sign this, you still need another place.
Right, we're going to need someplace.
The majority of them, they won't take.
Well, we talked about this last year, to try to get together with everybody and try and figure, figure out, because this isn't just, like I say, our problem. I know Troy has their own.
So, I don't know if Troy does it. Troy had a, was at one point, I believe, bringing them to the humane society, but their relationship discontinued. The law does allow municipalities to join together and create their own boarding place. Was it Runser County, was that in the news just recently? Runser County to try to petition the legislature over there to... There's, there's been a lot, there's been a lot of effort to get the state to change some of the rules regarding...
Well, we've been, after Senator McDonald bought it too, because it bought out the Bucky, Ag's market laws pretty much dictated what they were supposed to... market laws pretty much dictated what they were supposed to have, but they didn't want to provide, yeah, and then, you know.
But there's something just recently, the last couple of days, on the news, uh, it's the county executive, Renzer County.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that.
Yeah. Okay.
So we, what have we done? Motion was made, second.
Well, yeah, I think we look to also find alternatives, as was mentioned, as a loan pathway.
So let's make a motion, somebody's make a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion, we table this.
And I'll second it.
Motion made, and seconded to be tabled, call the roll.
Uh, Councilman Dawes?
Favor.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Favor.
Mayor Patricelli.
Favors.
Resolution number 67 for 2023 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Charles B. Patricelli to execute an agreement with Barton and Le Judice DPC for geographical information services, roadway inventory update services, and ADA transition plan.
Uh, Mayor, I will make a motion that we move on resolution number 67 for 2023.
I'll second it.
So just for, since we've tabled 66, we're going to modify this to six, this one will be 66.
Okay.
So, um, your motion is on resolution 66 for 2023.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we move on resolution number 66 for 2023.
Okay. So with that, um, we are looking to get the services from Barton and Le Judice. You may remember, they were the ones who was selected to do our paving plan for 2021, and that's what we've been working off to pave our streets moving forward. Um, we're also using Barton under this agreement to build our GIS system, which is that geographic information system that we can put on our computers, update our paving, update our inventory for when we do a new hydrant, a hydro replacement, a lateral replacement, uh, basins, all that type of stuff, we're going to build in those. That money is currently being covered, uh, in the administration that we do now, uh, for, uh, our CSO projects, so we're, this is all going to be funded through CHIPS funding. And how we're doing that is based on the old roadway improvements, along with the ADA transition plan. We have to have a plan by standards built and designed by 2026. So this will help us get to have that ADA transition after we start plotting this on the GEI, or GIS systems and then come up with as we pave a street, um, we identify the curves that have to be done and go forward from there. Total cost of this, you can see it all broken down on the, uh, resolution I gave you, uh, total cost is $50,000 or $80,000, and the individual cost for each is identified, the GIS is $16,740, the update to the roadway inventory and annualized services going there is $1,700, and the ADA transition plan is $22,040. And the money's coming out of where? CHIPS? CHIPS, yep, the highway improvement plan, because this is all highway based. Okay, any questions?
Uh, no, no questions for me.
All right, call the roll.
Councilman Dawes?
In favor.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Favor.
Mayor Patricelli.
In favor.
Resolution number 67 for 2023 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Charles B. Patricelli to execute an agreement with Northeast, I'm sorry, Northline Landscaping Incorporated for maintenance to Hudson Shores Park shoreline.
Make a motion on resolution 67.
I will second it.
Okay, this here, um, uh, Northline Landscaping is doing the work at our park, at our park, Hudson Shores Park, to trim the shoreline down, uh, to a manageable level, uh, which will be cutting it right back. Uh, we got this quote back in July, uh, but Northline could not get to us based on all the work that they had with the state. Uh, they are coming, they were going to be coming November 15th, but they're now coming Monday, so that's why I put this on for this meeting. Um, and this is to cut all the vegetation along the bank in from the top of the grass area down to the water line, from the front gate, uh, to the end of the parking lot just past, uh, the boathouse, so it's going to take it right up to the boat line. Um, so this is for $35,000, um, and that's the, the shoreline that's going to be done. No?
And then.
A little late for this year.
Option two, that's.
Well, it was $55,000 to cut all the trees down.
Okay.
So we're not going to do that.
We're not doing that, okay, because of the geese.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a one-time deal? It is for $35,000, they come through one time and cut it all down?
And then it grows back, unfortunately, so it's going to be a, an annualized, uh, thing. Our hope is, is that once we get into the, um, I get the acronyms wrong on this one. Is this the LSWRP, the water, the Water Improvement Plan that we got through DOS? Uh, if we go like you see across this, across the river, the bulkheads that Troy has.
Yes.
That's the only thing that may change as we try to go and increase our shoreline. When you put those bulkheads, there will be no reason to do, uh, that type of work in the future.
Right.
So that will be that. So I, I think some of our short, our shoreline will actually decrease by almost half, not, not, not maintenance of the shoreline.
Right.
We'll increase it, but we won't have to worry about ma- maintenance in those areas.
That would be nice, okay. All right.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilman Dawes?
Favor.
And Councilwoman Diamond?
Favor.
Mayor Patricelli.
In favor.
Resolution number 68 for 2023 is a resolution amending resolution 58 for 2023 to include a letter of credit.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we move on resolution number 68 for 2023.
I'll second. This was a pretty, I'll say painful process that Amanda and I were working through. Um, you remember the bond resolution 58 for 2023? That was the one that adopted, uh, the legislation for the sale of the streetlights. Um, in that, uh, section, uh, I think it was one, three, and five, it mentions that the powers to execute the closing were given to the Director of Finance. As we went to get a letter of credit, um, as requested by National Grid, the banking institution could not provide us a letter of credit because the bonding resolution did not give the ability for the Director of Finance to execute that document.
It was specifically for a ban or a bond?
Yes.
Not a letter of credit?
Yes, correct. So with that led, being so specific, we reached out to our council here, we went back to the one who wrote that, um, bonding resolution. They did the research because the letter of credits are used in certain particulars, not typically with bonding, um, but we got this resolution, uh, last night from Connie Cal of, uh, Barclay Damon, and, uh, they did the legal research behind it and that, that information for that ability can be passed to the Director of Finance with the resolution, that's before you tonight. So then we can move to the closing with National Grid on the streetlights, which I believe is going to be December 11th, um, and this is now moving forward. Okay. Call the roll.
Councilman Dawes?
Favor.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Favor.
Mayor Patricelli.
In favor.
The honor that concludes this evening's new business.
Okay, move into appropriations in the county.
Um, I believe I have something to talk about, but I believe we're talking about it in executive session?
Yes.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Right, okay, then we'll move and, uh, open up the public comment period.
At this time, the mayor and the council have authorized a public comment period. If you wish to address the council, we ask that you please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, just for the record, there's no one in attendance tonight for our, our meeting. We're going to public comments, I'll ask the public comment period to be closed. Let's see, I don't know of anything else that we have, so, um, I'll ask for a motion to be made to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I'm resistant to discuss collective argument.
Okay, I will second the motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded, call the roll.
Councilman Dawes?
Favor.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Favor.
Mayor Patricelli.
In favor.